I now call this work session of the Germantown Municipal School District Board to order. The first item on our work session agenda is annual policy review and revision. And the first item there is Mr. Bland, a recommended revision.
So I'll start us off. One of the things that we had discussed previously was providing some benefit to the first responders in the city of Germantown or city of Germantown employees. That's what this budget amendment, as we get ready to enter into the open enrollment season. That's the biggest request to support, which is why we also asked to waive it so we can apply this during this time. So what it would do was it would put the city of Germantown employees on the same standard as people applying through the academies. So you would still have Germantown staff and they would be the next item on equal footing with the academies. To Mr. Bland, I don't know if you want to.
Yes, you're correct. They would be one under.
Correct.
The academies and high school level K-5. Right, K-5, they would, it just shifts because we don't have the academies in K-5. So we did strike number five and just add city of Germantown employees, children to the third, which they're with the currently enrolled students. And if something happens where we're in a battle for seats, it goes to the seniority or you've been there longest, whoever's been there longest.
So one of the things that we're going to have to look at this year during open enrollment is even before we get started, and I'll share this during my superintendent's report. There are schools that we're going to recommend that we, we're just putting out a statement that says they're not going to be open to non-residents who are applying, new non-residents who are applying for transfers. Because we can already look at the capacity of the school and we can do a roll-up and say if all these kids go from kindergarten to first grade, first to second, second to third, you can get a predicted number of the school. And we can already see that specifically three of our schools in K through five, we're not going to be able to open those up, new non-resident transfers. This would move them up so that we could still consider, like I said, first responders, employees, city of Germantown employees before we have to make those difficult decisions.
Yes, and you mentioned waiving the secondary.
You have to waive the secondary.
Yes. So really it's up for discussion if y'all are willing. It's something that we had discussed before and it, we really just put together the policy if y'all wanted to discuss if that's something that y'all wanted to embark upon, then I think we.
So there are two things to discuss. One is moving, changing the policy, and the second is whether to waive the second reading, which we would need to do in order to enact this for this year.
Is there a reason that we're combining two categories of students in one line? Is it, do you see what I'm saying? It's two categories of students. One is the city of Germantown employees, children. One are currently enrolled GMSD students. Would it not work to do number three, currently enrolled? Number four, city of Germantown, and then number five, sibling? Because as you said, once we get to that point where we're looking at that, then it does become, how long have you been there? Which is currently enrolled. So it's really kind of misleading, I think, to have them on the same line when we can, it would be clearer if it was one and then the next.
I think it's.
True and false.
How is that?
So if they're both on the same line, if we're saying they're both the same category, we're granting both at the same time, they have equal standing. If you have one below the other, we have to get through this entire category of individuals that we would be letting in through that one transfer process before we move to the next one.
Right, but I still don't understand if it's still priority.
It only comes into play if we have a limited number of seats in that specific category. So if we're able to do everybody in that category, they would get in. Whereas if you move them to number four, we may do category three and not even get to number four. It's, we used to have the lottery. It's kind of like the lot, it, this kind of plays into the lottery that we used to have the first couple of years.
Right.
Whereas if you have five seats in four, four, sixth grade band, and we have six people on here. If we have five that are currently enrolled, they would get the seats before the city of Germantown employees. But if we, if we're able to get through the whole entire grade band, they're able to get in. Because sometimes we'll look at a grade band and if it's really close, we don't go to that priority level. We stop at the previous priority.
So if, for example, there are only four seats left in one grade band, we would say, hey, realistically, we could grade four more seats. We probably wouldn't go to the next one because typically there are more than four applicants in that seat, so.
I'm still not, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm not meaning to be thick-headed. I'm just trying to figure out the benefit of, because again, we're still going, if you have the four seats and you have the five people, it's still the four that have been there the longest that are going to get those seats, right?
No, not the way, not the way that's written.
Can we get an example that would maybe?
Because that's, that's what I heard, that's what I was understanding you say.
So I'm thinking if we don't put them there, so let's say there are seats in K-3 that we're able to accommodate both. If we put them to the next priority level, if we don't get to that level, we won't even be able to grant the K-3s, if that makes sense.
But, and also I think it's also, currently enrolled's only going to come into play because it's not if you're in that school that we're going to continue to. It's when you're moving from one school to another. So the only time we would be discussing this is if you've got students who are at Dogwood, for example, and they're wanting to apply for a transfer to Houston Middle School. So they would be new to Houston Middle School, but they've been with the district during that time. Or students who were at Houston Middle School who are rolling up to the high school. That's the only time currently enrolled comes in, comes into play, is if they're transitioning between schools. So they're, in a way, they're new to that, they're new to that school.
Okay.
But only if they're new versus the currently enrolled. But the checklist order is just going to remain, we're just separating out.
You're just combining two.
And they're actually jumping over siblings.
Right.
Non-resident siblings.
Which I don't have a problem with, I just still don't, I'm still just, it's just.
I almost wondered if it'd be better just to do city of Germantown employees, children as number three, and number four, currently enrolled students.
Me personally, I would not like to do that. Because if you have a kid that's been K-5 in every other schools, then the city of employees, kids would jump that kid.
They're brand new.
That's why we tried to combine them to, so that we could hit both.
That's why I think it'd be good to have them at four as opposed to three, but, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to necessarily vote against it because it's, because it's in one. I just needed, I just still think it's unclear. And I think it will make it difficult for parents to understand what their priority is, honestly.
I think a better example of saying, instead of saying, hey, we've got five people vying for four seats, it's more like if we had five people and we had 15 seats available. So we're going to, let's say four of those were currently enrolled, and one of those is a city employee. We're going to grant all five of those because they're in the same category. But then that leaves 10 seats going on to the next one. We wouldn't move on to the next 10 seats because, like I said, then we would have to be dividing. Some people in that category wouldn't get in, some people in that category.
They'd just carry equal weight.
Yes, they would carry equal weight. So they're all going to get in if they're at the same categories. Otherwise, we're having to do a lottery within that category.
That's a better example. That's a lot better example. On number four, I realize that that's non-resident students. Could, would it be beneficial to say current non-resident GMSD students?
I think that's helpful.
Yes. Which number are you talking about?
Number four.
Because the reality is siblings of a Germantown resident or Germantown resident, they're not applying for a transfer, they're guaranteed to, right.
But knowing that we are not the only people that read our policies.
Yeah, you could put non-resident siblings of a current GMSD.
Well, and some, some siblings do not live in the same household.
In the same household, that's my, that's.
And so when you're dealing with siblings, that some siblings live in districts, some live out, that is another twist.
That's why I don't envy Mr. Bland on that.
I don't want to sit with him.
Research.
Non-residents, it's, non-resident, I'll change it, okay?
Do we need an item on the agenda to amend?
If you're having consensus, then it can still go to consent if I change, it's up to you all to decide.
Well, it has to go on the agenda regardless as an action item because we're waiving the second reading.
Yes.
I think we can fix it here.
Can we fix it here?
We can't, we can't take a vote here.
No, no, we cannot take a vote.
It's a separate item anyway in the board.
The amendment, if we, if we are to amend it, it would require a motion to amend.
To amend it.
But is this, but this is clarifying language, this isn't an amendment of the intent.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an amendment.
I can go with that. I can go with that.
Go ahead and clarify, do you have it, you see?
I can go with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would agree though with the recommendation to waive second reading since open enrollment has begun. It's a time factor.
It's the 27th, yeah.
Okay, can we move to the second agenda item? Updated 2019-20 school fees and activity costs, Mr. Jones.
There were just a couple of changes. First, nothing for the elementary and middle schools. For the high schools, the graduation fee increased from 100 to 110 dollars. And then spring sports were added. And we're kind of changing the focus a little bit. We're trying to capture costs that are budgeted by the booster club and that are actually going to go into the school bank accounts. So we have made updates for that. So to give you an example, if there was a group or a team or an organization, and we're going to start moving this, we're replying to some of the accounts in-house. Uniforms, referees' fees, those types of details will be pulled into the school's bank accounts. But the travel costs, so if they decide to take an extra trip, those things will remain with the booster club account. So we're going to be looking at just the fees that we are going to be pulling into school accounts.
It's just based upon guidance from the Tennessee Comptroller's Office. So we're trying to get the funds into the correct bank account based upon their guidance.
So is there really a different financial impact to families then?
No.
No.
It's just splitting which bank account goes to and which other costs are paid out.
Okay, so if there are orchestra booster fees, those go to a separate account?
Yeah, there could be components of it that would stay with the booster club.
Right.
And others that would go.
And then there may be the class fee that is a different situation. And those will be lined out for us here separately? Or just the fees we take in?
Just the fees that we take in will be presented to the board. That's actually going into the bank account.
And then the finance person at the school will be responsible for separating these to the correct accounts?
Yes.
So we still, we will still have the accountability process where booster clubs are turning in their fiscal reports to the financial secretaries at the school. So there's oversight because there's school support. But the approval for those types of, if they want to take an extra trip or they want to take a charter bus instead of the regular bus, those types of decisions will still be booster club decisions and are going through their booster club accounts and their boards. But we will make sure that we're still collecting the information and they're following all the requirements that they're supposed to document.
So the spring sports highlighted, these are their figures that they determine.
Those are, they're provided by the high school, but they're based upon them working with the booster clubs and looking at their budgets.
That's your scary word, so that's provided by them, and then you're going to make sure they get others that have to go.
Right.
What was the previous graduation fee?
A hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Okay, so it just went up ten. All right. Any other questions about item two? Item three is a miscellaneous fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendment number 16, Mr. Jones.
Can we go ahead and start?
This seems to be.
It's basically shoring up, asking the board to appropriate funds, first for capital projects that are funded by the county commission, based upon actual dollars that have come in our total revenues to date. So it's showing up, shoring up the appropriation to equal what the revenues have come in. And then the same thing for the bond proceeds and building construction at Forest Hill. That's shoring up the accounts for the remaining bond proceeds to be used or paid out for construction costs.
As you know, this has been a moving target, so this allocates it based on the real dollars that if we're finally seeing come in.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Item number four is school, thank you, Mr. Jones. School calendar options 2020-2021, Ms. Price?
Three options, three options. So I think Ms. Crowder gave you some feedback, and I told her, notice from the feedback, it seems to be two categories. Parents really don't want to come back those two days early. That's stated over and over again. Instructionally, the teachers are really looking at calendar A. And so I'm just going to kind of go with some reasons why calendar would be instructional and strong, but we're, we can't make anything work. So if we return to school on a Thursday, that allows teachers to do procedures, collect all that stuff, get kids used to back to school. The students really like this because one of the things that they brought up over and over again was after any break, whether it's summer, Christmas, or anything, easing back to school is, is much better than just starting off and having to go full-time. We feel like we might, could really see an uptick in that, having that full week of instruction following two days of just getting through the housekeeping. Students are, this also would be very beneficial for our students with disabilities for that same reason. They often have a hard time coming back to school right off the bat, but if they were able to come back and kind of ease into it. All three calendars have the same fall, winter, and spring breaks as the other municipalities. In the second semester, calendar A lets the teachers come back before the students, which is another thing they kind of missed, which is having that planning and preparation time to get ready for second semester. Whether it be looking at the data and really driving instruction based on some of those things they would be able to do on that day. In that calendar A, it also lets us have back our district learning day so we can provide a full day of training for the teachers on that present day when students will be out. Another aspect of that calendar is if you look at Easter, not only do we have a Good Friday, we have off the Monday after. In previous surveys, that was a big thing for a lot of parents, was to kind of mimic what private schools do and make that a longer break in the second semester. The teachers also noted that second semester is really hard because we don't have as many built-in kind of breaks. And that, that comes right before testing, so it kind of gives everybody that, you know, and then we're, then we're into that hot and heavy. The last day in that calendar still remains the 21st, so we gain the days by obviously coming back through two days early. One thing missing on the bottom of that, that calendar is really only shows 199 teaching days, but we would add that point five for curriculum night and that point five for meet the teacher, which exists. We just failed to put it there so you could actually see it. The other calendars mimic a lot of what we've done in the past. And they're really in conjunction with most of the municipalities, except for Arlington. I think they're actually going, they're going to continue to go to school after Memorial Day so that they can change a little bit of things. Any questions?
If we chose calendar A, what would happen with kindergarten phase in?
So the kindergarten teachers have already worked that out, and it just shifts that phase in. Instead of a Monday through Thursday phase in, it goes Thursday through Wednesday phase in, so they've already come up with a solution.
Which then would benefit them to have that Thursday, Friday to get comfortable in their new classroom with their new teacher.
In kind of the same situation, ease them back in.
Instead of a full week in a.
Brand-new class. I've read through all of the comments. I did see a lot of parents who were reluctant to come back those two days before the break. Were there other reasons that you heard that drove one way or the other?
No, we were looking, I want to try to meet everybody's needs. One of the big asks, I'll put this on table from the student body, was to be able to have Veterans Day off so that they could spend it with their loved ones. The issue we have with that with any of our calendars were unlike any other municipality in the fact that we hold elections in our buildings. No other municipality has to do that, so we are bound by state law to take that day off. If then we were to add in Veterans Day, then we've got two four-day weeks with a Tuesday off in both weeks, back to back. And that instructional is not beneficial for anybody. Our students with disabilities have an extremely hard time dealing with those type of days also, so we weren't able to accommodate. That was the, I mean, we had an actual student body get together and send an email to the calendar committee to really consider that. But until we don't have elections in our school buildings, I, I don't see that being a possibility. Besides the fact that I really, if you're out of school and you've seen what the Veterans Day program is on Veterans Day and what it means, would it matter if it was the day before, day after? I don't know, but.
It's special.
We really do amazing things for our veterans, so. But that's the only.
Was, what age was the group? I don't, if you don't mind me.
High school.
They were high school kids? I mean, that's something that they could potentially be motivated to do something special at the high school.
Yes, and I think that's what we talked about is.
That would be great.
Mirroring what we're seeing at the elementary school today, if we have something that honors our veterans at the middle of high school.
Because if they are bringing their family in, it really, that might be, that could be some kind of at least concession.
I think the parents concerned for childcare on a partial week.
Yes.
I know that that before and after childcare scenario for a lot of families is really, really crucial. And I didn't know specifically with Reach, I know there's some private places that exist that serve as, and serve our students. But just from a standpoint of our, our, I guess, conversations with the folks with the city, and I know that was kind of talked about in some of the feedback. But from your standpoint and maybe what y'all have discussed, is there any way to kind of know that they would just offer like a prorated week or for those folks that have to go back?
As of right now, I don't know that Reach has any full-day programs. Even when they do it in the summer, if I'm not mistaken, they're like half-day kind of camps.
That's right.
I could work with Pam Beasley and see if she could put some half-day camps together that week at the elementary schools.
Or even just kind of the, you know, being the partial.
But Thursday, Friday, they would be, Reach would be.
Full-on.
Would be open. I mean, the minute we open, Reach will open for before and after-school care. During those three days, I, I mean, I could ask.
It's like anything else, we're not open. I mean, you know, right, they have to make arrangements.
Yeah, I saw that too. There were concerns about partials, second semester.
The whole week, they would still have to get childcare.
Right.
But I know, Ben, they're done that, and you know how difficult it is.
Any other questions, feedback?
Calendar B was sure the least favorite.
Well, I was, I was going to say it was remarkable to me that the other options were pretty neck and neck. And even just what I heard from people directly, kind of kept that tally going. And it seemed to be very split on the other two. Very split between A and C. Yes. With one with being the partial week and one not. And so for them to both be so popular for a variety of reasons, I think that's interesting.
I also like the better balance between first semester and second semester instructional days.
Yes.
Because first semester has always been short-changed. So just to be a little closer on that, I appreciate that in calendar A.
And I'll tell you, the committee was wonderful, but that calendar A was a morph of all the other calendars we brought, and it was brought to us by a Farmington teacher. She was like, hey, so this is the way a committee should work, and it was, it was a good one.
One about a lot of people, I spoke with Mr. Manuel earlier, and said, you know, when I'm around the region, I mean, people in just even neighboring states, it's this type of calendar with the kind of what I call the ease-in is very customary. And just because people, we don't maybe see it as much around here, a lot of them, people say, wait, wait, y'all go Monday through Friday, the first week of back-to-school? That sounds like a lot. It's what you know, right?
So what day would be a registration day in that scenario? Would it be the week before that? Or would it be like Monday of that week?
We could play that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Because I could see people really saying, you know, now you're keeping me here two weeks before school starts.
Actually, that was another requested input on here. The high school said last time when we had too much time, this actually reduces the amount of time that teachers are having to, you know. So it was, it's good for the teachers.
It's a balance for the teachers. I just, for families, if we can hold registration like on that Monday so that then they come on Thursday, then that week before, they're not, they can still go out of town or vacation.
Don't want to guarantee, because the one thing we've got to look at is the high school schedule. Because I know how valuable that weekend is in between the two, because I know our counselors are working the entire time over that weekend. Because what happens at the high school, they come in, they get their schedules, and they come back and say, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. And so they have a stack of, so we're just going to look and see how much time they need to fix schedules.
And we also talked about then, is it necessary to hold everybody on the same day? So could the high school be different? So I think we still have a lot of talk in that area to make it in the best case for everybody. Lastly, our follow-up will be, once this is done, committee is going to reconvene right away so that we can get that calendar for 2021.
Yeah, that was my next question was, can we, we had talked about getting back on the two-year, is that still the intent?
It is. As soon as you all have made a decision and we have a calendar, we'll base account, we'll get right back into committee, and we'll, or committee will project another calendar for you. You can keep it as a draft for now until you decide you want to pull it in as.
And as we talked about today, one of the things that's important for everybody to realize is having this calendar is a luxury and it's a draft. Because the reality is our calendars are approved in April by the state.
That the spring before, the spring before not.
This April, this calendar will be approved for the, for the next year.
And so even if we approve the one for two years, that.
Right.
And if you remember, we made an adjustment to one of those calendars as well after having had to count two years. So we even have the ability to make adjustments if we see something didn't work.
But the major ones, I think, that people are concerned about.
Right.
Yep, and so we can hammer those out.
Thank you, thank you so much.
The next item is Amendment Two to Professional Services Agreement with Evans, Taylor, Foster, and Childress Architects for Bathroom Renovations, Mr. Kathy.
This item is on the board agenda for the board to consider. We'd like to move forward with design services for the bathrooms that did not get completed or finished at Farmington and Riverdale. And that's specifically what this proposal is for. There's only one bank of student bathrooms that did not get completed at Dogwood, and we thought it would be easier on all of all to make more sense to include that in the Dogwood bid package that's going to go out for ADA upgrades there as well as ceiling tile and lighting upgrades. So that we have one general contractor there to, to do the work. So that we don't have, anytime we have multiple contractors on top of one another at one side, it creates issues. So that is what this agenda item is for, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
These will mirror the design of the ones we did last summer.
So the ones that we did last summer that did not get completed, it will mirror, the Houston High, Houston Middle, and Riverdale were the ones we did not get to complete. So it will be the same, same material selections. It will be, now, it won't be completely the same because the structures themselves are different. But it will, we've set the standard in what it looks like, so the material selections and that will be very, very similar, yes.
And so this will finish Farmington, finish Riverdale?
So for design, it would finish out.
For design, so we've got to bid it out and see how much it's going to cost. Y'all will have to make the decision.
The dollars that we have are the dollars that we have and once bids come in. The dollars that we have, the dollars that we have, and once bids come in, we'll have it broken out by school so we can decide what we want to do. But as far as design goes, this would complete all of the bathrooms at Farmington, Dogwood and Riverdale.
So this is for design, not the.
Yes, we'll have a different discussion or hopefully a good discussion when bid day rolls.
The amount kind of makes it obvious.
Yes.
I wish we could replace bathrooms.
Any further questions for Mr. Kathy?
The last item on our work session is Second Amendment to Option and Land Lease Agreement with Tower Ventures for the relocation of cell phone tower at Dogwood Elementary School.
So what you have on the agenda here, this is the third location that's been brought to the board for approval. The first location was on this property. It was approved by the board. We had an amendment that moved it over to the opposite side of the tree line on the park side. There was an agreement in place that was unknown to the board, unknown to the school district administration.
And unknown to the registrar of deeds.
And unknown to the registrar of deeds. It was never recorded in the plat. We were just quite frankly unaware of when it was moved to location two. So what is on the agenda for this evening is to move it to location three, which is really almost right between locations one and two. So this would be actually in the tree line that exists between the park and the school.
And we had a request to move to executive session. I think that some of the board members had questions on legality and potential lawsuits. So if y'all are willing, I know that there were board members who wanted to move into executive session to discuss some of the litigation issues.
Ben, let us move to executive session to discuss.
Good evening. This meeting of the Germantown Board of Education is called to order. I do want to welcome all of you tonight to our meeting. If you are here to be a part of Citizens to Be Heard, I would ask that you would get a form to fill out to be a part of Citizens to Be Heard. They are just outside the door and on the table to your right. And if you would turn those in to Ms. Subramani, our board secretary just here, then we will be prepared for the Citizens to Be Heard section of our meeting this evening. Let us take a moment of silence. Thank you. I've asked Ms. Betsy Landers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move to the section of our meeting where we approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Betsy Landers and seconded by Ms. Amy Oof. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Chairman Luder?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next portion of our meeting is recognitions and awards. Mr. Manuel.
So I'll try to turn this around so I can see everybody. You've heard me say this before. One of the things that makes Germantown Schools special is our commitments and our partnerships with those people in the community. Tonight, we are privileged to have members of our Germantown Education Foundation here, and so they are here to grant their grants. They have sat through different forms and applications from different teachers in all of our schools, different staff members, and tonight they're going to grant recipients for those programs that they feel have some value and really add back to our school district. But tonight, the total amount of GEF donations during this grant cycle is $61,614. So I think that's something special in and of itself. I would like to recognize all the board members who are here with us, and if I miss anybody, please let me know so we can have them stand up. Once again, these are volunteers. They're people who feel a commitment to our schools. They work hard to read through all these applications to grant these cycles. They are thinking of ways to raise funds for our schools and make our school district better. And so once again, we can't do what we do without them. So if we could, please have Ms. Alice Drake, if she would stand up. Jason Gillum, Laura Barden, Tripp Turner, Sherry Hicks, David Beitos and Manjeet Kerr. Is there anybody else on your board that I'm missing, Ms. Drake? Anybody else there? First, let's have a round of applause for them for their, their time and effort for our school system. Also, at this time, if I could have the principals and assistant principals come up with us too, for the schools that are receiving some of these grants, they can be here with us to help congratulate those different recipients. And I'm going to read through all of them in a little bit about each of the, the programs. And this was a hard job. All of the applicants were good. They added quality to our district. I did not envy them having to go through and choose some of those recipients. So first, she could not be here tonight, but Ms. Jennifer Mock, she's a library teacher or librarian at Forest Hill Elementary School, and her program is called Library Tech for All. And she received a grant for $12,000 for Forest Hill Elementary School. And the goal of that program was to purchase a class set of laptops for Forest Hill Elementary School. So if Ms. Mock could not be here, but we're thankful for her for what she did. So we'll make sure that Mr. Burkowski is here to accept on her behalf. But he will also be taking a real check tonight for his school. So Ms. Drake, if the members of your board want to also come up here too, as we call each person up, we can then grant it for them. So. Once again, for Ms. Mock and her work in putting that together for us. And everybody has to stay because we've got to do pictures afterwards. The next grant that they decided to award was for this kinesthetic classroom. Ms. Lori Graham wrote a grant, and the goal was to create a kinesthetic classroom by incorporating movement equipment, underdesk bicycles, stair steppers, foot swings and stability ball chairs. If Ms. Lori Graham could come on up. Congratulations, thank you.
You should probably get that to your principal.
Yeah, they gotta take home the checks tonight. Next, for Houston High School, Ms. Lori Tingle wrote a grant for a Scrabble wall for the point, which is our alternative program at the school, for $2,039. This project will install a Scrabble wall in the point, and that's Houston High School's alternative classroom setting. So Ms. Tingle, if you would come on up. Ms. Tingle?
Thank you.
Next is Joey Phipps from Dogwood Elementary School, and the project was for the Dogwood Outdoor Classroom, Dogwood Classroom on the Hill, and it's a grant for $20,000. And it's to fund an outdoor learning space at Dogwood Elementary School. I think what is special about that program is it's also partnership with their PTO at the school that they did raise a lot of funds to put together with this project. So it is something special that we're going to see develop at Dogwood Elementary School. So Ms. Phipps. Next is for coding in the classroom. Ms. Ashley Smith received a grant for $4,998, and it outfits both Farmington and Dogwood Elementary School with their own Sphero Bolt Power Pack, and those are 15 robots, chargers, carrying cases and several accessories that go with those programs. So Ms. Smith for writing her grant. Thank you, congratulations. The next grant is for the SEL Book a Day, and this was a $10,000 grant. It purchased materials for a picture book library to enhance students' whole character development and open their hearts and their minds. So if Alexa, I can't say her name, Guines and Linda Frederick, if y'all could come on up, please. Next, from Houston High School, it's Music for the Ages. It's a $1,045 grant for Ms. Kenzie Mullane. It purchased some additional sheet music for added community concerts for the Houston High School Choir Program. So if Ms. Mullane could come on up. And last but not least is Mr. Thomas Coligier, and this grant was for $6,077, and it's the 21st Century Collaborative Classroom. And this transforms the physical classroom space into a space designed for collaboration and cutting-edge student engagement. So we're thankful for Mr. Coligier and his work for transforming the classroom. So at this time, we're going to take a moment to take some pictures with each of the recipients, our Germantown Education Foundation Board. And this is special, and the reason we're recognizing the recipients too, they had to step out of their box. They didn't just get to ask for this. They had to write up a whole proposal. They had to give reasons. They had to really think outside of the box and think about how they could improve their schools, their students' experiences. So we're thankful for what they've done for our students, and we're thankful to our foundation. So we'll take a quick break to take some pictures in front of the banner, and then we will resume our meeting. Thank y'all.
I want to remind you, for Citizens to Be Heard, that one of the things to be mindful of is that if there are several persons intending to express the same intent, GMSD Board rules require that you designate one spokesperson to speak for your position. So I would remind you of that. I will read the full instructions for Citizens to Be Heard before we come to that part of the meeting, but I do want to give you the opportunity to know that ahead of time. We move to the next section of our meeting, which is reports. Ms. Griffith, the TLN update.
Thank you, Chairman Luder. Oh, I just dropped my phone. The 2020 session of the 111th General Assembly will reconvene at noon on Tuesday, January 14th, or tomorrow. GMSD, Board of Education and Superintendent Manuel have registered for the upcoming TSBA Legislative and Legal Institute. On Friday, December 20th, I participate, excuse me, participated in TSBA's Legal Lunch Webinar, which was a presentation of their upcoming legislative agenda, which was then published the following week, December 24th. On Friday, January 10th, GMSD and Germantown Board of Education hosted Biscuits and Bills, a legislative breakfast. The breakfast was attended by legislators from Shelby County, Shelby County Commissioners, a Tennessee Board of Education member, superintendents and school board members from both Shelby and Fayette Counties, and all five of the other municipal districts in Shelby County. Some of the topics discussed had to do with teacher recruitment and alternative pathways for teacher licensure with resounding support for continued pursuit to fully fund any state mandates. The national teacher shortage continues to be a topic of discussion in school districts across the state of Tennessee. A study done by the Center for American Progress, which analyzed data from the Department of Education, determined that the number of students studying to enter the teaching profession is down by one-third since 2010, in addition to the topic of mental health and the need for further investment into psychological and emotional support for students and staff alike. Another topic that seemed to have overwhelming support at the event is the recent legislation changes to background check requirements. The specific issue is the lack of consideration for length of time since certain offenses have occurred, which as a result does not allow for people with those offenses to be able to be employed by a school district.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Next is the chairman's report. Since our last meeting, we have had many holiday events, band concerts, choir concerts, the Germantown Holiday Parade, parties at the schools, and thank you for inviting us to come to those. And thank you to the school board members for attending as many of those as you were able to attend. Also, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week, several attended, and we certainly are watching what is happening with that. Also, I want to take a moment to express great thanks to Angela Griffith for the Biscuits and Bills event. It went very, very well. It is an annual event that is hosted by different school districts each year, and it was our turn to host, and we did so very, very well. And I really appreciate all the work that went into it by you, by the staff, and all of us were able to be here for that. And I felt like it was a very productive time with our other school boards as well as with our representatives legislatively. So thank you very much. That concludes the chairman's report. The financial report, Mr. Jones.
You have your financial reports for the month ending December 31, 2019. Looking at the balance sheet, first in the school operating fund, we have total assets, liabilities and fund balance at 14.5 million. In the federal projects fund, we have a receivable due from the Tennessee Department of Education, 288,000. Remaining total assets, liabilities and fund balance in the following funds are, in the cafeteria fund, 264,000, capital projects, 4.3 million, the health insurance fund, 2.1 million, the OPEP Trust, 2.8 million, and in our general fixed asset account group, which is buildings, construction in progress, land and equipment, 107 million. Just a couple of comments on the statement of revenues and expenditures. In the school operating fund, our target percentages through December 31 are 50% for administrative or support categories, 42% for instructional categories, and overall, we've spent 40% of the total budgeted. In the health insurance fund, year-to-date claims are averaging $379,000 monthly versus $375,000 budgeted. And finally, in the OPEP Trust Fund, $34,000 combined realized, unrealized gain on investments was reported for the month. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Manuel, the superintendent's report.
Yes, if you can turn your attention to the screens, I thought it would be informative to give some updates on where we are as far as the transfer process. We are getting ready to have our open enrollment window open. You can see it there on the 27th. It opens at 10, and it ends on February 7th. So for people who live outside Germantown Municipal School District limits, and also for those residents inside, this is their opportunity to choose to go to a different school or to apply to come to our schools in general. Before we grant those transfers and we look at how much space we have, there are a lot of different things that go into whether we open a school, close a school, what priority levels we allow to come into our schools. So one of the projects that our Student Services Department, Ms. Bland, were very thankful for the work that they, they did around this topic. They did a roll-up, and this is not a projection, this is not a forecast. All they simply did was looked at the current student numbers at our schools, and this includes residents and non-resident numbers, and moved them up a grade level. And then they take an average over several years of what the typical kindergarten classes have coming in. And when we look at that total number and compare it to the capacity of the school, we can make some determinations about whether that school is going to be open for transfers outside the city limits. So we're talking about non-residents at this time. So when we look at Dogwood, for example, and we're looking at that capacity of 790 students, current enrollment of 695, when we do these roll-up projections, we're looking at 673 students. That's a positive variance for us because there are 22 students less from next year, projected next year to this year. This does not take into account build-out. This doesn't take into account growth, people moving into the city. Like I said, this is just students that are currently in seats at our school district. moving up a grade level and doing an average for the kindergarten students. When we look at Farmington Elementary School, the capacity is 720 students, they have a current enrollment of 641. When we do those roll-up projections, we're looking at 653 students, which means they would have 12 more students than they currently do this year. So that poses some issues for us, some concerns. When we look at Forest Hill Elementary School, built for 850 students, current enrollment of 552, when we do those roll-up projections, we're looking at 580 students. That's an increase of 28 students that we would have to accommodate or be ready for. When we look at Riverdale Elementary School, and that means we're just looking at the K-5 grade band at Riverdale, it's built for 800 students, current enrollment of 786. The roll-up projections get it up to 792 students. So we're looking at six students over what they currently have right now. Houston Middle School, capacity of 930, current enrollment of 978, roll-up projections, we're looking at 957 students. It's still better, but we're still over our capacity of the school. That's why we're designing the expansion and the wing to go on to that school. So we're going to develop for that school. And remember, at Houston Middle School, we have very, very, very few non-residents. I think there were seven left in the eighth grade that we were still allowing there. So these are residents that are attending that school. When we look at Riverdale Middle School, specifically in the 6th through 8th grade bands, for 510 students is the capacity, current enrollment of 504. The roll-up projections, we have a big class leaving there, it actually drops to 453 students, so that's a positive variance of 51 students. Houston High School can accommodate 2,100 students, and we arbitrarily, because we grant transfers into Houston High School, we hold that number around 1,900 students artificially because we have the academies there. We're really looking at about 1,500 residents currently at Houston High School. So that number is 1,929, roll-up projections 1,982. Like I said, we control those numbers artificially. But this is only one piece of the puzzle, so we're looking at the overall capacity. The state also controls the class sizes in our schools, so they have ratios for each grade band. So when we're talking about the K-3 grade band, we're talking about 4-6, we're talking about 7-12 grade band, they have BEP ratios that they staff us for, and that's what we can accommodate. I'm not going to go through all the schools, but I wanted to explain something that we have to take into consideration once we start looking at the registration numbers. So it's one thing to have teachers and staff for all the students. If we want to open the doors and say, anyone who wants to come to Germantown, we could do that. We're going to get the money for those students, and that's going to pay for the teachers, but we have space concerns on top of this, which is why we talk about the capacity. That's why we have to look at those numbers. So these are real numbers, so we have Riverdale's current numbers, the K-3 average of one teacher for every 19.37 students. They have 27 sections of K-3 students. When we do that roll-up and we do a projection of what the kindergarteners are going to be, that number, that ratio is going up. So it's actually going to 19.7 students. So when we look at Riverdale, so here's an example, you can see, we're going to go ahead and make the decision right now that Riverdale is not going to be open to non-residents, new non-residents next year, because it would push us over that ratio. We're not allowed to push above a 1 to 20 ratio, and there aren't available classrooms. Like, we couldn't add a 28th section or 29th section of K-3, there's just not the space available at that facility to accommodate those students. If you look at their 4-6 grade band, where you're allowed to have a 1 to 25 ratio of teachers to students, their current numbers, they have 17 sections of 4-6, they have 406 students in those grade bands, their current ratio is 23.88. Doing the roll-up, it actually, we see some improvement. If you keep the same number of teachers and sections, next year, they're predicted to have, projected to have 384 students would be a ratio of 1 to 22.58. And then in their 7th through 8th grade range, 14 sections, 351 students, you're talking about a ratio of 1 to 25.07. Now, those are the averages. You can have classes that go above that as long as the overall average for the teachers and sections. So if there can be a class of 21, 22 in the K-3 grade band, as long as there's a class of 18 or 17, so you can't just look at the individual, but there are limits on those. So this is a complex problem, but I do want people to understand, we're looking at the space of the school, we're also looking at the numbers of sections and teachers and staff that we have to add to a school. So Forest Hill, for example, we could add additional students at Forest Hill, because there are open classrooms, there's space available in the actual physical facility there. But they would have to be enough students that would balance the number of teachers that we would have to add, because when you look at the teacher-student ratios, that's a concern. So that being said, the reason I want to give the board some information, the Student Services Department Administration is looking at closing to new non-residents three schools. At Dogwood, Farmington, and Riverdale K-5, we're not going to be able to accommodate any new non-resident students to those schools, we wouldn't be able to grant those transfers. For residents, we do have to start looking at those numbers. So there's no guarantee that the residents are going to get to choose where they want to go in this scenario either, because we are still looking at space and we're still looking at ratios. So if we have even balances of students wanting to go between Forest Hill and Dogwood and Riverdale and Farmington, we can accommodate unlimited resident numbers going between those, as long as they're going to equal out and we have the space available to accommodate those. So that's going to be a decision, once we see the number, numbers of residents who want to go between schools, that's going to be a decision at that time to determine this. But at this time, right now, I can tell the board that we will not be able to accommodate any new non-resident numbers because of space limitations and staff limitations at those schools. So once again, this doesn't include Germantown staff members, children, that's a very small number, so we do want to clarify that. All applications will be processed and approvals and denials will be mailed by March 14th for all transfer applications, so whether they're residents or non-residents, they will know by March, that'll be our deadline to notify them. But I did want the board and community to be aware of the analysis that we're doing to try to determine whether we approve or deny transfers, because that's coming soon, starting January 27th. And it's not a first-come, first-served, we have a priority list, so it's not like getting concert tickets where at 10 o'clock you have to log on and make sure that you get your transfer in. Anytime during that window, as long as you make sure you apply, we go through our priority list to determine our applications. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. We move to the Citizens to Be Heard section of our meeting, and I do want to share with you our board policy regarding citizens to be heard. GMSD, by its policy, allows persons to address the board during the Citizens to Be Heard section of its agenda, but only within certain guidelines. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at school board meetings. Thus, there is no inherent or legal right of citizens to make comments during a school board meeting. Prior to making your remarks, you must state your name, address, and the subject of your presentation. The chair would remind you that if there are several persons who are intending to express the same sentiment, GMSD Board rules require that you designate one spokesperson to speak for your position. If you do not do so, and the chair determines that comments made are cumulative, the chair will direct the speaker to cease their remarks. Individuals addressing the board shall address their remarks to the chair. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. In accordance with GMSD Policy SB 1.404, remarks will be limited to three minutes, unless time is extended by the board or otherwise reduced by the chairman to reflect the number of citizens to be heard. TCA 39-17-306 provides that it is a Class B misdemeanor to intentionally prevent or disrupt a school board meeting. Please be advised that any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to the aforementioned rules will not be permitted to continue or make their remarks at this meeting. This evening, we have 14 individuals who have indicated their desire to address the board. You will have three minutes. I do remind you that if your remarks are cumulative, I will stop you. So we do have several, I know that you have creatively come up with different titles, that's fine, but if the remarks are cumulative, I will stop you during your remarks before you reach your three minutes. The first person under Citizens to Be Heard is Pierce Holly. Pierce, if you would come forward, and when you start talking, the first thing I need you to do is say your name and your address and what your topic is, okay? And then after that, I will start your three minutes.
My name is Pierce Holly. I'm, I live at 9385 Old Plantation Cove, and this is my student opinion. I am a fourth grader at Dogwood. I am a backdoor walker. I am lucky to be able to play in Dogwood Park every day. If there's a cell tower put in our park, it will completely ruin the park, and many kids, families, and animals will be affected. The cell tower will cause our trees to be removed. Trees give us shade and improve our air. We will lose play area to run, play football, tag, and areas to walk our dogs. We just got new soccer goals on our school playground, and the cell tower is much too close to the goals. We will also lose our path that leads through the woods, that we, we even have a mini-sized teepee in there. Our park is a kid's playground, picnic destination, and great place to watch the clouds. A cell tower does not belong in our park or at our school. Dogwood Park is a bird sanctuary. Having a cell tower is visually just plain ugly. Service roads and fences that surround it will remove more play space, not to mention all the footballs, dodgeballs, and soccer balls that will end up inside the fenced area. Who's going to go get those for us? Please don't ruin our park with a cell tower. Please take it somewhere else and save our park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. The next citizen to be heard is Jesse Moore. You'll state your name, your address, and the topic of your talk.
Sure. Thank you. Jesse Moore, 2651 Holly Springs Drive, 38138. Pierce, very eloquently put. I'll try not to overlap with what you said, I think you covered a lot of what I wanted to say. Good job. I have not had the privilege of, I have not had the privilege of seeing this new property. It seems first-rate. Built like it, built like it should be, just like our school district deserves. We live in a wonderful community, which is built to sustain and protect our families and children. Special people like Pam Beasley and many others here today constantly strive to maintain our sought-after schools. Thank you. I use Verizon, have no problems with cell reception. If there's a venture to build this tower, I cannot see how this will improve our schools. There surely is an alternative site. The grant for the newly won outdoor learning space, congratulations again for that, is not meant to celebrate a tower. We celebrate trees in Tree City. I am concerned with the proposed construction's impact on the school's topography, the erosion, the stormwater detention plans, where is this water going to go? We're adding concrete to the site. Our children deserve play areas. I'll see you the rest of my time.
Thank you. The next citizen to be heard is Kathleen Flea, Catherine Flea, sorry. You'll state your name, your address, and the topic.
Catherine Flea, 2657 Sweet Maple Cove. I'm here to talk about accountability. This cell tower is one of the most ill-advised decisions I've ever heard of, placing a 14-story high, high-frequency radio wave emitting tower mere steps from where five-year-olds play and learn eight hours a day, 10 months out of the year. Who is going to be held accountable? Will the school board's lawyer be held accountable for approving the signature of a 35-year contract with no out clause except a mutual out? Anyone familiar with contracts knows that mutual outs are useless. Did they just simply sign the exact boilerplate the cell tower company presented them? That lawyer should be terminated for that decision alone, and whoever actually signed it should also be held accountable. There are countless things that can go wrong, and your hands will be tied. No recourse, no arbitration, no out. Who will be accountable if something unsafe happens? Who will be held accountable if a child gets into the enclosure and hurts themselves? Who will be accountable if the ice falls off of it? Who will be held accountable if the planned collapse feature doesn't work exactly as planned in the event of a storm? I've literally heard it explained by the gentleman from Tower Ventures, "Oh, it just does this." And everyone just smiles and nods, "Well, that's scientific." What are the exact studies showing how this collapse feature works? Has it been tested? Has it ever failed? Do you guys even know? Our kids deserve more. Where are the proven environmental studies that this will not affect the community, the natural resources in the park? The burden of proof should not be placed on the community, it should be placed squarely on the party's profiting. Who will be held accountable if enrollment at Dogwood drops? 75 transfers were requested due to the cell tower. Who would be proud to walk their relatives and friends by the school and say, "Isn't this a wonderful school?" I'm sorry, you have to look past the 140-foot eyesore that's been placed next to the playground. Who will be held accountable when property value drops? I teach my children every day to be accountable for their actions, you should be held accountable for yours as well. My five-year-old is not responsible for the cell signal in Germantown, Tennessee, neither is the school board. Yes, Germantown needs a tower. No, it should not be on an elementary school playground. I had both of my children enrolled at a private school this summer, ready to go. I promise you, I will leave, others will too. Someone will miss that state funding, and then who will be held accountable?
Next is Beth Warren. Beth, again, if you would state your name, your address, and the topic.
Hi, I'm Beth Warren, I live at 2489 Nether Hall Drive. Thank you for listening to us this evening. I wanted to tell you the story of a place called Dogwoodia. Dogwoodia is an imaginary land that was invented by a lot of Dogwood children. Here's a picture of some of them playing before school one morning. This is pretty much the exact location where the cellphone tower is planning to be built at this moment. Dogwoodia was a culture that was built upon teamwork, camaraderie, life skills. The kids had little clans, and they used a currency of acorns, and they sold sticks to build their houses and teepees. And this went on for several years. Both my children, I think their whole memory of their childhood is going to be about the woods at Dogwood Park, and the woods are about to be demolished by this cellphone I'm heartbroken. I don't want to repeat anything anyone else has said, but I just want to say that everything good about education, I feel like going outdoors improves your brain, you can read lots of studies about that, walking through the woods, having the peace and serenity that comes from nature, and we're tearing that down for the profit of a commercial company that has nothing to do with children. I don't understand that, I don't know why we would do that. And I'm hoping that the commercial company, Tower Ventures, will decide that it's not worth their time to keep pursuing Dogwood as a location for their tower, and they'll let the school board out of their contract. I just think so many Tower Ventures employees work and live in Germantown, and they should be good neighbors and know that this is not what's best for the kids, and even though the school board signed a contract, it was not a very smart contract for them, for the good of the children. And I just think that maybe Tower Ventures will find it in their heart to find a different location for their cellphone tower and not put it in the middle of Dogwoodia. Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen to be heard is Wes Talbert. Mr. Talbert, if you will state your name and address and the subject.
Good evening. My name is Wes Talbert, and my subject is Consider the Source. I live at 9081 Baynard Loop North with my wife and two children. Both of our children are in the Germantown Municipal School District. One of them attends Dogwood Elementary. And of course, my family, like many here tonight, we're definitely against the cell tower. But you're going to hear from many others that might not agree with us, they want the cell tower. So what I'm looking for everyone here to think about is you really need to consider the source. Now, what do I say when I say consider the source, what am I talking about? Do they have kids at Dogwood Elementary specifically? Or do they just want better cell reception? Is it the responsibility of this school board to provide cell service? Last time I checked, your primary responsibility is to educate our children, to educate them in a safe environment, to educate them in an environment that is healthy, to produce them to be the next generation of people who will lead not only this local community that is Germantown, but will make an impact on the greater mid-south. Yet we seem so focused on providing cell service to the community, which once again, in no charter that I've ever read, and I've scoured the site, does it say that it is the responsibility of the Germantown Municipal School District to provide cell service? to provide cell service? But that's what we're talking about tonight. Right now, we could be talking about how we educate our children better. Now, the second point that I'd like to bring up is the risk of litigation. I'm a businessperson. I understand we all need money, things we've got to be profitable. But have we weighed the litigation risk of what occurs if we do put that tower there? And then there's anything that happens to a child or a staff member as a result? We could talk about the health. We could talk about Ripon, California, and their elementary school that had all these cases of cancer that occurred. What happens if we put the tower up? That happens to our children, and then families file lawsuits against this school district. Now, that's a real issue. Litigation is expensive. Lawsuits are ugly. It's costly. It'll be something that this school district will be mired in, and so once again, what we should be doing with our money and our time is to educate these children so they've got a safe environment, and they grow up to be happy, healthy, contributing members of this society. I would really urge you to consider that this is not the business. The business, I want to underline that, the business that the school district should be in to begin with. You're here to educate our children. I trust you to educate our children. My wife trusts you to educate our children, so does everybody out here. But we're talking about providing cell service. That's a problem for the city to worry about. And the city is separate from this school board and this school district and what they do. Thank you for your time.
Next is Ms. Toni Nigren. Again, if you would state your name and your address and the topic.
Hi, my name is Toni Nigren, and I live at 1824 Johnson Road. I'm extremely sad to be here. As a parent of GMSD students, it looks like next year I'm going to have... I can choose to send my children to a school that's zoned with a cell tower, or I can take a transfer and maybe have a water tower out here. So those are going to be my choices, and those are pretty, pretty sad choices. We live in Germantown. We came here long before we had kids, but we knew we wanted to stay here, and we knew once you guys became your own school district that that would be great for us. But so far, that doesn't seem that the decisions that are being made are really putting our children first. You, as a school board, have been voted in the position to put our schoolchildren first, not the wants or the needs of the city. I hope that you really look at this new location and see that it is not in the best interest of the kids, of the children. I am again voicing my opposition to this new cellphone tower at Dogwood. The latest location is right in the middle of the area that kids use for recess, and it would be negligent to build this. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. The next one I'm having a hard time reading. Hasmuk... Can you say your last name for me?
Prajapati.
I can't. I will try again. Prajapati.
You're not the only one. A lot of people have...
I don't like that. Okay. If you'll state your name, your address, and your subject, then I'll start your time.
Hasmuk Prajapati. I live 9460 Johnson Road, extends in Germantown. I'm a periodic interventional radiologist at St. Jude. I want to highlight two things. So as a radiologist, I mean, we dealing with the radiation every day. The one of the main important thing in the... I mean, this is electromagnetic, the radiation come from the cell tower, thus kind of electromagnetic waves. The one of the principle is, like, whenever you go near to that source, the exposure goes four times higher. So when I heard this, I think this is one of the concerning things, which is in the two-hundred meter, the radiation... I mean, the tower, the source of the, is within the two-hundred meter, and that's a lot of radiation. There is a lot of evidence, I mean, there is no randomized trial, no any... But there are a lot of evidence indicating that it can affect the neurogenerative, I mean developmental things of the kids. And there is called epigenetic. It can affect the genetics in such a way that it decrease the concentration and behavior things of the children. So just I want to raise these two things, and I would... My son goes to the Dogwood, and I would appreciate if he can do something for an interest of kids. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Ed Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, if you would state your name, your address, and the topic, then I'll start your three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ed Jacobs. I live at 2262 Kilburny Drive. And the topic is a little different than what you've been hearing, but it is cell towers. Okay. I do have a concern. I didn't know that the school board was responsible for having the tower erected or whatever. But the concern I have is that other citizens are not being heard. Nobody I know knew that there was even a petition. But anyway, so I wanted to offer my opinion and talk about some things that actually happened. But the concern I have is health, fire, safety, and having the ability to communicate under circumstances that are real and happening right now, okay? Nothing perceived. This is actually happening. I think most citizens in the area I live in don't have very good cell coverage. You have to go outside of your house to get a signal, okay? You can't make an emergency call in your house. You can't call the police, the fire department. More importantly, any life-threatening conditions, okay? Going to share an experience with you. It's difficult for me to talk about. My wife was diagnosed with brain cancer, okay? Back in November of sixteen, she was in every facility in Memphis, including the Duke Neuro-oncology Center in the Carolinas. I had to work. We needed insurance. There was no choice. So I had caretakers, or I had to just go there every day. But every day, I was able to communicate with her, no matter where she was, until in her last days, we brought her home. I could not communicate with her anymore, okay? It was horrible. I can't tell you how bad that was. You know, that was the only time that I was not able to do that. Unfortunately, her, you know, like I said, her case was uncurable, so she did end up staying at home for her last days. And you want to get as much as you can out of that, but I wasn't able to for most of the day. But anyway, you know, and not to elaborate too much, there were a series of things that happened when she was home. She had a broken hip, concussion. I couldn't even call for help. I couldn't take care of her and get on the phone and call for help. I had to go outside of my house to call for help and tell her, "I'll be right back." Said, "That was pretty difficult." So, you know, I hear... You know, I heard a comment made, not here, but elsewhere, about 5G, and what will that do? Well, I don't even think you could use the same configuration for 5G. You need antennas that are five-hundred feet apart. So I don't think that's an issue, from what I know. I'm not an expert. I used to be in the business, though. But anyway, I'm just... My concern is here and now, and current, and emergency situations. And maybe if I could interject a little bit of humor. If somebody breaks into my house, I don't want to say, "Hey, could you hold on so I can go outside and call the police?"
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, Renee Lynn. If you would state your name, your address, and the topic, then I'll start your time.
My name's Renee Lynn. I live at 8987 Ashmere Drive. My topic's also communication, but on the Dogwood family side of communication. My family is opposed to a cell tower being placed at Dogwood Elementary School campus or Dogwood Park land for many reasons. However, I'm here tonight to address my concerns regarding the communication with Dogwood families about the possible placement of a cell tower on our campus. We have lived across the street from Dogwood Park for over eleven years now, and we have been a Dogwood family for nine of those years. Over the duration of these years, we've been informed, involved in topics affecting the neighborhood and the school, such as the aesthetics of changing neighborhood street signs, speed bumps, traffic flow, and safety on Ashmere Drive, even the planning and development and location of the current Dogwood Park playground. We have always appreciated this communication and felt that our input and involvement on these topics enabled the community to make decisions that resulted in the best interest of the families in the neighborhood and of Dogwood School. Since that level of communication has previously occurred on topics important to Dogwood families, we're surprised that we haven't gotten the same level of communication regarding a huge cell tower. In May, through grassroots efforts to distribute communication regarding the cell tower at Dogwood, we found that over seventy Dogwood students committed to transferring to avoid a school in such close proximity to this tower. We want to continue to see Dogwood thrive, and our fear is that if the decision is made to move forward with placing the cell tower on Dogwood's campus, then the full impact will result in an even more significant number than seventy once this communication is widely distributed in the community. We feel that the decision to move forward is being rushed and wish to allow all parties affected the chance to weigh in on this very important topic. Would you please consider communicating to the Dogwood families and offer a question-and-answer session for the families to be able to voice their opinion on the matter before this moves forward and it is too late to change course? Maybe consider a town hall meeting where the Dogwood families, faculty, and school board can come together to educate and discuss the facts surrounding this important matter. As our website states, "Dogwood Elementary School has a wonderful history as a great school, located in an amazing neighborhood." Please help us keep it that way.
Our next speaker is Nora Daher. Daher? If you'll state your name, your address, and your topic.
My name is Nora Daher. I live at 2119 Star Meadow Cove. And I also love to be in Germantown. I'm a physician here in town. I'm an allergy immunologist. And my topic is the children. I took an oath to do no harm to my patients, and I expect nothing less of you. We are here for these children, not for cellphone tower reception, not your personal cellphone reception, for these children. Your duty is to them, to do no harm, to provide safe environment without interruption. And if you have even the slightest doubt that you cannot vote for the benefit of the children, then I ask that you either abstain or step down from your positions and put someone in that can vote in their interest and nothing else. Please do not be cowards. Work with Tower Venture to find an alternative solution than the school property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daher. Next is, again, I apologize, Vipul? Vardon? Is that right?
So my address is 2271 West Glen Alden Drive. And I have two children that go to Dogwood. And location of where I stay is would be within eyesight of where the tower is. I personally have great signal at my house. No problems with cellphone reception. When I go in my house, as some people state, the signals drop. Well, maybe it's the construction of my house that's causing the issue and not the cellphone signal. A lot of the topics that I was going to talk about, we've had several members of the community already discuss, including a board-certified radiologist. There are many other aspects regarding this tower besides safety. It is, there is a limited play area. My kids go out back there on weekends. There are many other children that we see on the weekends that play in that area. That area is not going to be available because there will be a fence. And I don't know about your guys' children. My children love to climb on things, climb over things, climb into things. A tower and a fence would be nothing but a challenge that they would want to conquer. And maybe other parents' childrens would love... They like climbing fences too, and towers. Other things regarding the tower. If I wanted to build my house at another story, at two stories, three stories, four stories, and I applied for a permit, I would not be able to add additional story onto my house because it would just be an eyesore in the neighborhood. It would stick out. It would drastically affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood. It would drastically also affect the property values. So the school is part of the community. And one of the reasons many parents, including us, we're part of that neighborhood, we live across the school, is for the school itself. If the school has a tower without taking into consideration the children, many parents, including myself, would likely request a transfer for my children. If, again, I'm not aware of the numbers, seventy parents requesting transfers, if there are a large number of...
Thank you. Ryan Scoggan. You would state your name, your address, and your topic, then I will start your time.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Scoggan, 9516 Dome Meadow Drive. And my topic is community pride. Because of my military service, I've lived in seven states in the last fifteen years. And I've never, since we moved to Germantown, I have grown to appreciate how much effort it takes to build a community like Germantown and maintain a community like Germantown. And I'm just, we've grown incredibly proud of it, and we're proud to call it our home now. And so, case in point, a couple weeks ago, I had a utility trailer that was in our driveway for about three days, and I got a note from code enforcement. And I happened to see him as I was pulling up, and I kind of knew it was happening. So I actually, I thanked the guy. I'm like, "Thank you." Because what you do makes everything else in this community work. You take a step back, and it makes a lot of sense, the small things that can make a big difference to make our community beautiful, to make people want to be here, to make people want to send their kids to school here. So I asked us, "So I'll just take a step back and look at this big development." And say, "Does it really make sense? Does that fall in line with whatever else, the small code enforcement issues up to a giant tower that's going to be put up next to the school?" So I would just ask you to think about these things and think about the pride that everyone, all of us here, have in the community and what we can do to best continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Zhang. And I may not be reading it properly. Perhaps R-A-N?
Ran Zhang. R-A-N, first name, Z-H-U-A-N-G.
Did she? Okay. Richard Town. If you'll state your name, your address, and the topic.
My name is Richard Town. I live at 1953 Arden Landing Cove South in Germantown. The topic I want to talk about is the cell tower. And I'm going to take the opposite side. I should have brought a small army with me if I wanted to discuss it. But I think that the cell service in Germantown, especially, I live on the, just on the north side of Wolf River, and I'm the president of the homeowners association where I live. There are eighty-one houses. And the number-one complaint that I get constantly is that we can't get any kind of cell service. And I understand the people don't want, you know, visually, they don't like the idea. But I know that where it's being placed on that property is at our far end and away from the school, somewhat away from the school. The other thing that I find... The other thing that I find is that with the lack of cell service in this community of where we are, which this gentleman talked about earlier, it is a safety and health issue where we can't get in touch for emergency services. And I will point out, when the flood happened, the city had to bring in, had to bring in a mobile cell tower to keep communication going. It is that poor, and I'm happy that some people have good service, but anybody that lives really north of Dogwood has terrible service. And I think that, one, the school board already has a valid contract to do this, so it's, that part is not up for debate. The, the community needs, Germantown needs, better coverage. And I know that someone said the school board, that's not necessarily their, their problem, but the, if a child were hurt at that school and you couldn't get in touch with the fire or police department, it would be a very important service. So, I would hope that the school board would just move forward and try to get this thing finished and help the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our citizens-to-be-heard portion of the meeting. Thank you all for participating. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve all the items on the consent agenda. Second?
The consent agenda consists of the approval of amendments, the annual review revision of policy second reading, the updated 2019-20 school fees and activity costs, and the miscellaneous fiscal year 2019-20 budget amendment number 16. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to board action items. The first item on the agenda is annual policy review revision, the policy of district open enrollment. Mr. Bland, would you like to speak to that?
I will speak to it.
Oh, Mr. Manuel?
So, this is something that the board had discussed in the past, essentially moving city staff, first responders, the ability to be higher up in the priorities for transfers. This policy accomplishes that goal. So, any city employee would then become, I think it was number four, if you look at the policy.
Number three.
Number three.
I move to waive second reading and adopt revision of policy SP 6.2061, inter-district open enrollment after one reading.
Second?
Second.
The motion was made by Ms. Oof and seconded by Ms. Landers. Is there any discussion?
For those from, that weren't maybe present at the work session, just to understand why we might waive that, second reading was in the interest of time with the open enrollment dates.
And amended policy is also attached with the non-resident term added.
Correct. Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Ms. Subramani.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda are, is the 2020-2021 school calendar. The team brought us three options, and those were all considered by the community, and the community had the option to weigh in. And so, Ms. Price, would you like to speak to those?
Sure. We had a committee come together. It was parent, students, teachers, administrators. We met two times. The first time just to flesh out calendars, look at all the different districts. We considered the pros and cons of all the municipalities around us. We all came with recommendations from schools and from parent groups that they met with, as well as we had some students at the high school email us and also make some recommendations. We came up with three possible calendars from there, met with the calendar committee again, and at the end, I'm sorry, we came with two calendars, and at the end, one of our teachers came up with a hybrid, which ended up being calendar A. Calendar B satisfies the student's wishes, which is to be off Veterans Day. With calendar B, it does give us two weeks in a row, where we would have four-day weeks and both Tuesdays off, which makes it difficult. Calendar C goes with Presidents' Day off, Veterans' Day in. The difference in calendar A is that we do come back to school two days early, and so when you look at the survey, you'll notice parents aren't in big favor of coming back to school two days early. Have you, if you look at it from an instructional point of view, the teachers feel like if they have those two days to go over procedures, collect materials, they will then have a full week of instruction rather than that being broken up. The students also like this option because one of their second biggest things was always to ease back into school. It's easier to start slow than to just have to jump in right away. Another consideration where students with disabilities have a hard time also making that jump, so that would satisfy that. But with calendar A, we get back a teacher learning day in the spring, which we haven't been able to have in our calendar. It also gives us an extended weekend, which was a request two years ago in calendar committee by a lot of parents during that Easter holiday, because it kinda mimics what private schools do. So, our recommendation from an instructional standpoint solely is for calendar A, but I, if you look at the survey, you can see that both it's calendar A or C.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve calendar option A.
Second.
The motion is to approve calendar option A, made by Ms. Landers and seconded by Ms. I will note that the difference between A and C in votes was one on the community vote, so option B got half of that. So, it's clearly either A or C. Is there any discussion?
I might just add that even if we vote on it, the state has to approve it, and that won't be until April, just to let people know, just because we've approved it. And we've also are in the process of coming up with a calendar for the, two years out. Again, it wouldn't be approved until that April before then, but at least you would know when fall break is. That probably wouldn't change. So, we'll, I don't, I think they're gonna, the committee, calendar committee's gonna go back in session again next week or so, and they'll look at doing a calendar for another year out.
The calendar committee is planning to meet in February, waiting to see where this calendar went, but we can, we will give you a draft, and we'll just present it as a draft until then, but at least it'll give parents an idea of those vacation times.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion to approve calendar option A?
I'd like to speak to it. I think, I don't know if everybody on the board wants calendar option A, so I think we need to speak to the strengths of, to me, that calendar. I like that the balance of instructional days between the first and the second semester are more even with this calendar. If you look at the other calendars, it is eight days difference, and then this one is only five, and I know that doesn't seem like much, but that's an entire week worth of instruction that, or it's three days worth of instruction that's important to, to these kids, and the difference, the difference of the amount of time that teachers get their hands on them is important. I do like the ease in of, of starting on a Thursday. When I was a teacher, we started on a Thursday, and it gave us the chance to get those procedures in place, get how, this is how my classroom runs, so that when Monday hit, you're full speed ahead, ready to go. I think that's important, especially for our younger kids and for children who need a little extra help. The other thing I do like is providing that additional learning day. I think that's important for our teachers to have that day in the spring. You know, everybody needs a little boost, and sometimes those learning days are that boost that those teachers need. So, I'm thankful that the calendar committee saw worthy to put that back in. But again, it goes back to instruction for me, as much as it will pain my children to go back to school on a Thursday, the sixth instead of the 10th. I know for them and for all of our students, it's better to get those extra instructional days in. Thank you.
Ms. Subramani, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item is amendment two to professional services agreement with Evans, Taylor, Foster, and Childress Architects for bathroom renovations at GMSD schools. Mr. Kathy, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, what's before the board tonight for consideration, this is a continuation of project that we started last summer to renovate our bathrooms at GMSD schools. We completed bathrooms at Farmington and Dogwood this past summer. This design contract would give us permission to move forward with design services to finish out the bathrooms that were not completed at Farmington, as well as the bathrooms that were not designed for at Riverdale. We will be also designing the final bathroom that was not, the final bank of student bathrooms that were not completed at Dogwood, but that will go in a separate bid package along with the ADA renovations at Dogwood and the ceiling, tile, and grid and LED lighting upgrade at Dogwood. So, that is what is before this board for consideration this evening.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve amendment number two to the professional services agreement with Evans, Taylor, Foster, and Childress Architects for bathroom renovations at GMSD schools in the amount of $119,000.
I second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Griffith. Is there any discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the second amendment to option in land lease agreement with Tower Ventures for the relocation of cellphone tower at Dogwood Elementary School. I would remind everyone that GMSD entered into a contract with Tower Ventures in September of 2018. That contract was amended to move the cell tower that was originally proposed to a piece of land behind the tree line. That land was owned by, and Ms. Estes, you can stop me and correct me at any point, that land was owned by GMSD, but during the time that it was, former Shelby County Schools was leased by the City of Germantown for parks. The City of Germantown parks encumbered that land through an agreement and a grant with TDAC. Because of that encumbrance on that land, Tower Ventures is unable to place a tower on that place, in that place. Therefore, they are coming to us with a second amendment for a placement for the tower. If we do not move the tower to that place, the second amendment, then we are in breach of contract because we are not able to execute the contract which was agreed to in the second, in the first amendment. I've said all of that correctly? Okay. That's where we are. Mr. Kathy?
What's before you on the agenda this evening, and Chairman Luter, you summed it up pretty nicely, that originally, the board approved this contract back in September of 2018. There was an amendment to that contract to move the tower, so what's before the board this evening is a second amendment, which will move it to a location which is pretty much between the first location and the second location, which was a part of amendment one to the contract. So, that's what is before the board for consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the second amendment to the option in land lease agreement with Tower Ventures. Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Oof and seconded by Ms. Landers. Is there discussion?
Mr. Kathy, could you, you kinda described the differences between, I guess this is technically the third site, even though it's the second amendment, distance-wise, because there's been a slight adjustment to the previously agreed-upon site, a little bit of a turn in, like we knew, being more on the park side as opposed to being more in the tree side or tree line now. You just mentioned kind of in-between, but I feel as though feet or distance from the building itself and the play area itself, could you speak to those distances?
I'm not bringing the exact measurements. I can tell you that it is where it is located in this second amendment, which is before the board tonight. It is further away from the building than the first location. It is not as far away from the building as the second location that was approved in the first amendment.
Okay. My, thank you. I think I walked, I walked through there today, and after having walked through the previous two sites, it's not marked off, but based on the documentation, the color documentation that's been provided, it does seem that it's, it's still considerably further away than the original site, is really where I'm going with that, and more of a turn away from the park but towards the school property, because it's going to officially be on our property at this point. Does that sound about right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Ms. Subramani, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Landers?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Ms. Oof?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Chairman Luter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes our business section of the meeting. Our February meeting will be announced via the website. If you would please check there for our February meeting. We are trying to move it so that we are not at the same time as the board, mayor, and alderman in response to some citizens' concerns and requests. There being no further announcements, we stand adjourned.